And, and give him the time to do so because he has another meeting to get to.
All right, Yate. Shei A. Preston Holiday. In sheh in shloth is the plan by sheh's team. That sheh shei A. Twudetini, Twudetini, that sheh like here ani. I see, na'zis ani, na'sha. Shema A. Alicia, do sheh A. Preston Holiday would ya? Um, sheh A. J. Twudetkihoten. I grew up here in Black Mesa, Arizona. Um, and my family originates from Navajo Mountain. So, I'm excited to be here. This is the first time coming to inscription house chapter meeting. And I thank you guys for giving me the time to, to speak with you. Um, so my role basically is the, the program supervisor for the division of aging for all of Western Agency. I oversee thirteen senior centers, sixteen communities altogether. Um, and I wanted to kind of just come here, introduce myself to you, to the officials, to let you know that I'm here in Tuba City. Uh, there, there's been a delegated supervisor for the longest time. Now that I'm on board, you have someone to re-tattoo in Tuba to communicate with Winter Rock, if anything. Uh, we also have a new supervisor here in inscription house, which you guys haven't had for a while. Um, her name is Carol Be Gay, so you could replace her name with Elta's on the reports, reports. Um, so I'm excited about that. We're also looking for a new cook, uh, a cook position. If you guys know of anybody in the community who wants to serve as a cook, the center is looking for a cook. Um, some of the plans that I have for the senior centers, um, purchasing a new HVAC system. So I was going to ask the, the, the chapter not today, but sometimes down the line to see what we can do to work together to purchase this system. They're pretty pricey. Um, I also have new refrigerators, stoves, an oven, a pellet stove that are all coming this week. So, I kindly asked the officials on a chapter house staff to, to be on the lookout for that because they're going to need some help unloading this equipment here. Sometimes during the week this week. We're constantly giving out food boxes. Um, I think within the last couple of months, when it really started snowing, we delivered about over a hundred and fifty food boxes to elderly within the community. Um, if you're over the age of sixty, you can definitely be, you are eligible to be a member. You can, you can come here, have a meal, or you can have a home-delivered meal to you as well, depending on your eligibility. So, home delivery is basically geared to people who can't move, who are immobile, uh, disabled, um, so on and so forth. Um, there's various other, uh, uh, services that are provided. Either if you need assistance with dentures, eyeglasses, or hearing aids, you can come see Carol over at the center and she can get you started. If you need any of those type of assistance, or if you know anybody in your household, um, who, who would like that type of assistance, we can also assist with that. Uh, for the most part, that's going to be the gist of my presentation. I don't know if you guys have any questions? I can, oh, okay, all right. We'll start with Lena. It, um, so this senior center serves here in Chonto. So I have two drivers, one for Chonto, one for inscription house. And that one cook is going to be here by herself, by him or herself, that person will be housed here. Um, that, that one, I'm not sure what is allocated here for inscription house, but we do have some funds for it. You just got to see, see Carol over there. Thank you. Oh. That is, that is my plant. Okay. What's your name? Okay. All right. Okay, I'm related to a lot of people here. You mean Carol, the new supervisor. But, um, any, any other questions? Yeah, so I'm just making my rounds to all the chapter houses and running down to the township to see what I can do to get Kian to a new senior center over there, because they're just closed at the moment. So that's where I'm running off to. But I appreciate the time and have a good day.
Thank you for telling us who you are and where you're from. And, and yes, we would like to sit down and know for this senior center here to, to see how we can help each other. So just, um, contact the chapter manager and then he'll contact the rest of us. All right, thank you. Oh, you have a good day. Okay. I believe that we have, um, we have twenty that are signed in, so we need five more for Quorum. Um, looking at our agenda here, we have under presentations, starting with Council Deregent. Um, Chiyaaz Herman, are you online? Okay, if not, shei yo, um, when we do get Quorum, we'll give him the floor again. Candidate for Kokonino Board of Supervisors, District Four, Ross Bergstreser. I'll go ahead and give you the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, Vice President, and Secretary. I'm Ross Bergstreser, Yate. A lot of you know me now, I've been around, I've been around quite a bit. But those that don't, I'm running for Kokonino County Board of Supervisors, District Four. Now, I know that there's no post office box here, so a lot of individuals have their post office box in Chonto. But if you are a registered voter in Kokonino County, you can still sign my petition. A little bit about myself, um, my mother is from the, um, German, Lowmiller Blyler family clan. My father is Pennsylvania Dutch Bergstreser clan and the Irish Kelly clan. Um, and I'm, I'm running for Kokonino County Board of Supervisors. I've been doing this for probably about eight months now. And in that time, I kind of did some statistics. And I've attended over a one hundred meetings in District Four from chapter meetings, club meetings, and veteran organization meetings. Have learned a lot about the system, a lot about what the needs are and necessary needs are for, for each of those communities. It also includes Navajo Mountain, saw a beacon here. There also is Tonalea, um, upper and lower Moenkopee, coal mine. Did I say Tonalea? And then we have the District Five, which is Talani Lake, Loop, and Bird Springs. And I started this campaign being influenced and, and asked to, to participate in this campaign from veterans organizations in Talani Lake, Loop, and in Bird Springs. And they've encouraged me to run for this office. And so I, I decided, did some of my homework and decided, yes, I'll do this to help support the veterans and also members of the communities that District Four represents. There's, um, in these stats, besides those hundred meetings, I've also put on eighteen thousand miles on my car, going from chapter, chapter to chapter and, uh, learning a little bit more about the organizations. I've, I've also assisted with the food, um, distribution from St. Mary's in most of these locations as well, trying to get to know the few and your communities. So anyway, um, I think that representation and leadership are very important in any political forum. You have to have a good leader, but if a good leader does not represent, it's a waste. Whereas if a leader and representation are, are a must. I am here, I am here to help you and, and to assist you. And, uh, just to let you know is that you have a wonderful staff here. I'm able to have, have the opportunity to, to work with the staff and also volunteers to help this community, to help run this community and to serve their community, as well as your administration here and your, your, your staff and your president, vice president, secretary. Uh, they've all have a great desire to serve their community and to help and assist in any way that they can. And I'm grateful and thankful I can be a part of that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bergstreser. Ede Aya, um, county supervisor, Niyedluwos, um, for District Four. Remember, this voting season, we'll be voting for, um, uh, Nihi redistrict, Naliay, Ki Bikaoh, Ede Ohot'a, Vooda'ilne. Akol Lena Fowler is no longer going to be over us. Ei Linno Wachiko, um, Kaibito and all that, Ei Ahjiko. But Nihi will be part of District Four. Ei Niye Dejeh, Echla. Um, how many of you are, how many of you are running? Okay, two Democrats, one Republican, three Dejeh for this district, the new district that we're going to be in. Ei Berdalsni, Hischahhe. Okay. Akone Aya, the Chonto Preparatory School Reauthorization. Um, we'll go ahead and have Alroy? Alroy Watson, Shin Hichahatotsi.
Increase the green. In sixth grade, this is where things get a little tricky. Because these sixth, seventh, and eighth grade are students who may not have come to mid- eighth grade levels because they were at the height of this epidemic, where those foundational skills didn't just be developed. So the movement of proficiency is not as dramatic. And in lower grades, you can move students a lot easier as opposed to sixth, third. However, those nine numbers are substantially consistent. But in eighth grade, we reduce the red, increase the yellow and green. So one strategy. At Chanta, how do we know about doing it? I'm sorry, do I have to clarify this? What? Okay, okay. I didn't know how much detail you wanted. So at Chanta, one way we systematically go about supporting students, supporting educators, and supporting the building is we have a curriculum consultant. She and the principal will go around to the classroom.
Right, good.
I'm sorry. Pretty nice, man. Okay, so they will observe the classrooms. They'll go through it. And then will determine how the teachers are doing. They'll collect that data. And after they collect that data, they'll say, you know what? This teacher needs more help than that. This teacher needs more help in English. This teacher needs more help in lesson design. And so if that data is collected, all that information is collected, then they'll say, okay, let's grab these people to help support the teachers. Because we have to support the teachers. So it will impact student learning. And everybody is supported all the way down. And so that's what we've done. And for sixth through eighth grade, they're like, okay, you need to support these teachers. And you're going to have our consultant come. And they're going to plan, observation, debrief, the help pods. And this is supporting the teachers because what does this lesson really look like? Are these standards really look like? Then they plan with the consultants. They observe the lesson. Did they execute correctly? And finally, they debrief them. So the reflection process is supported as well. And in this way, they're building the teacher's capacity to improve their practice and provide the best instruction to ours for this. So that's what's occurring at this grade level. Then if you go to the next slide, our ELA. So math, overall, they've actually exceeded their goal. They've already met their year goal. And I'm sure they're going to revise it and make it even better. Because they want to continue to see growth in all areas. In ELA, initially, students started out as six percent proficiency. And again, they said, let's make a goal of twenty percent. Students came in at forty, forty-nine percent in the red, forty-three percent probably proficient, and eight percent proficient. So they shifted that to reduce the number in the red and increase the proficiency. So now we have a lot more. We have fifteen percent proficient. And we decreased the red portion by eleven percent. So that is a nice amount of growth. And so they're almost at the point where they've accomplished their goal. So kindergarten, first grade and second grade, they reduced all the red. There's no red anymore to begin back at the middle of the year. And they increased the yellow and increased the proficiency. So rounding up for K through two teachers in ELAs. And third through fifth, they reduced the red. And they've increased the yellow and increased the green. So third through fifth grade teachers are on track to meeting their goals. In our ELA, you see a decrease in seventh grade and eighth grade. So these are the things that happened that we should celebrate because we're seeing the growth and there are more than that have wrapped goals. And they're almost at their ELA goal. So that concludes my presentation. You have any questions for me?
The interpreter. Okay. Yeah, yeah, nah. Be si, we have an issue. We're a business. All right, that was the other. See, but it's not that. I should say, wow. All right, I am not. All right, yeah, huh. See, it is, yeah, the reason is. It's hard to do the big shit. I have sad, nah. I have, I shouldn't have been. It's a, it's a, it's a sad. And here, yeah, I think so. They, they also did it. Oh, it's, oh, it's, it's that. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. Oh, it's, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a. They, 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 they. They, 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 they. They, 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 they.
That's the only thing I ask you to do is keep the gym, you can destroy everything else but not the gym. But anyways, thank you. Again, according to the assignment sheet, we need two more. I don't know. Hae shi. Um. Yeah, we have, no, we have two five of them, or we can't. But we prospered eight nights. We can't count it. There's thirty one assigned then about six of them are not holding this year.
Oh. We want to be. The long.
Yeah, the long house by the one. Uranium issue. Okay, so our next. Kun an gae yeon, we'll go ahead and do on your agenda is number seven. Introduce, oh, not that one. Oh, you're gonna put them on there, oh. Okay, we have a representative that is um. Uh, Hall No, yeah, Hall No, again. A D D Uranium. Uh, Genetik yet one sixty. All the way uh from southern uh South Rim, near South Rim Grand Canyon. Uh, Genetik yet, Genetol, Kun at one sixty, they White Mesa Land in general, how the she processes. And so. So. Gae oryo yeon, yes, I was always met here, um, why they have um a resolution on our agenda? Um, the resolution pertaining to that is number. Eight. Oh, number eight, so.
Leona?
Leona? Is it Leona?
Oh, would you like us to present?
Oh, I go ahead and while we're waiting for um form to fill up, I wanted to go ahead and give you the floor to present to the people that are here right now and those who are online with us.
How can she?
Go ahead and have the floor. Oh, and one thing though is um we do have a person that did come in. Um, he said, southern, southern, uh, South Rim Grand Canyon, Joe, there is a mine, but there is an older mine on West Rim that's still in opposite operation now. So, um, we might let you know that to include that too. You go ahead and have the floor.
Okay, um, do you guys have a screen? Is there a screen up on the, can you see the, if I share uh some, some, some pictures? Oh, cool, okay. Um, I do have a presentation, let me just um share that real quickly. Yat e, uh, shee e, tworich itni nishla. Tenam bithni basheshki, uh, chit, tenam, tenam bithni basheshki, kiaani dashichae, toho glini dashinale. Um, bebdi da, senirde shogran, ado, uh, U N M de. Ba inishtak. Um, good mor- good afternoon, my name is Leona Morgan and I, I'm from Fort Defiance. And I live in Albuquerque right now, I'm in school at U N M. Um, I've been working on uranium mining uh for a long time. I just wanted to share this picture, this is something uh we put together to talk about the health effects of uranium. I helped to stop a uranium mine in Church Rock. Um, but that one, that's a long story. And then, and then there's a, there's a waste dump, I also worked on that one in, in, in New Mexico by Carlsbad. Um, we stopped that one last year, so that's just a little bit of my background. I, I work on um these issues of, of not just uranium, but nuclear, other nuclear stuff. So, um, my presentation, it's, it's, it's got a couple other slides, but I, I really wanna just talk about the Pinion Plain uh uranium mine. Um, there's some, some of the history, the background. I know this has a lot of information. Um, the most important thing is, is just to notice this uh eighteen seventy-two mining law. The eighteen seventy-two mining law, it's, it's an old law, but this is, this is important to know because um a lot of mining happened under this law that's really hard to stop today. So, so the mine I'm gonna talk about, um, that's, that's how it's going forward because um, right now, there's a lot of uh old mines and around the Grand Canyon, there's also new mining claims that, they're not developed, they're just uranium mine, mining claims that exist. That means around the uranium, around the Grand Canyon, there's a lot of uranium. And um, so in order to stop that, um, the groups that were fighting the Pinion Plain Mine, they started to work on a national monument to, to stop new mining because we've already been impacted by all the old mining. So you can see here, um, this is the Cameron area, there's a hundred and eleven abandoned uranium mines. They're, you know, in various stages of cleanup and so just to, just to go back to the, the mine. Um, we have, right now, um, the Hall No group, we have been taking pictures, we have been monitoring the mine, watching it for, for a long time, our group started in two thousand sixteen. Um, but some of our members, they've been watching it for more than ten years and over the years, we've been talking about how the mine is, is um, it's, it's south of the Grand Canyon and it's next to Red Butte, Red Butte is a sacred site. And the, the Pinion Plain Mine, they used to call it Canyon Mine, this, this mine was fought in court by the Havasu Pai. So the Havasu Pai were fighting this for a long time and our group was supporting this, um, mostly concerned about the mine and then Red Butte as a sacred site. But then also the transport would go through Navajo to the White Mesa Mill, so the mill here, um, the Yoot Mountain Yoot uh community lives there close to the mill and they've, they've also been fighting it as well. So our group has been in communication with the, the different tribes and then, you know, different groups along the way. Um, right now, um, we are really concerned about the mine because over the last seven years, we knew they weren't mining and, and we knew that, we knew that there, there, they still had to complete their construction, their construction, which they completed last year, they needed to build what's called a vent shaft. Anyways, we were watching them and taking pictures and in August, um, President Biden signed a, a national monument uh up here to stop the new mining claims that I mentioned and then down here. So about a million acres, um, this new monument stops all future uranium mining except for a couple. So there's a couple of them that gra- got grandfathered in under that old eighteen seventy-two mining law. Somehow, these mines, they're, they're still allowed to go forward. So, right now, the one that we're watching, Pinion Plain, it actually started to, to take out uranium on, on January eighth this year. So our group, um, we notified Navajo Nation EPA, um, we also came to the regional meeting. That's how I met um some of the chapter officials uh out there, so I'm, I'm really happy some of the chapters have started passing resolutions. Our group, we're trying to present and, and give information to all the, all the chapters, but um, it's kind of slow, so anyways, um, yeah, so just, just to finish the presentation, uh, the company, it, the, the mine is here and the company owns the mine and they also own the mill. So Energy Fuels is the company, they wanna take the uranium south to I forty and then again, um, I heard someone say US one sixty, so going all the way into um Utah. So, so these, these roads, they're all US highways. Um, the Navajo Nation has a law against mining, no uranium mining, also no uranium transport. But because of the, the limitation of, of, of our jurisdiction, we, the, the tribe can't really stop, well, they can't stop it, they can't stop the transport. So, we want to stop the mine and we're talking to other groups like other nonprofit groups um off the nation like Sierra Club and Grand Canyon Trust and others who have requested a meeting with the governor of Arizona. So we're, that's what we're doing is trying to shut down the mine and, and asking for the governor to, to do that. If the mine does transport, they're saying, um, we're looking at probably twelve trucks a day take, carrying about thirty tons of uranium in, in big trucks covered only with tarps. And so in order to stop this, you know, that's why we're talking to the governor. Um, there's other things that the, that folks can do in the chapters, um, such as passing the resolution, um, you know, just keeping, keeping your eyes on the route. Um, this is just a map to show where, you know, how the route is going through these places that there, there's already a lot of contamination. So we don't need more and um, right here, these are some of the pictures we took over, over the years. Um, this is the, the company, we caught them spraying uranium water. Um, they, they were, my, they were drilling their shaft, they weren't mining, this was years ago and they, their mine was filling up with water, so they thought they can get rid of it by just evaporating it. And they couldn't, so they were hauling it in these trucks um to the mill. And, and so, yeah, we caught them with the, you know, just watching them, taking pictures. This one is from a couple weeks ago, um, we did report that. And here, here is the new uranium, so you can see it on the white snow, these black uh piles, there's actually six piles. And um, this is what they call low-grade uranium and they, they haven't started moving it yet that we know of, so the company, they're not obligated to, to inform anyone. Right now, um, they're supposed to tell the Forest Service and then the Forest Service is supposed to tell the tribe, but they're only supposed to tell whoever is assigned in the tribe, which is probably the president, vice president, Tipo, probably EPA and DOJ. But, your chapter can request directly from the Forest Service to get your own notification. Um, I, I can send some information about that, I think I already sent the information, I don't know, maybe I'll send it again. Um, but yeah, just, just to end the presentation, right now, there's a big push for new uranium. So the President Biden and, and other people think nuclear is clean. Um, they say nuclear energy is uh carbon-free or carbon-neutral, this is, you know, has to do with climate change. So they're trying to save the climate and the way to do, Biden, the way he thinks he can do that is to increase nuclear energy. So this, this shows um nuclear energy development from uranium mining up here going down to the power plant. And so at every stage, we have the mining, the milling and then making the fuel. There is waste created at every stage. But when they measure the, the carbon or the, you know, the, 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 the stuff that pollutes the atmosphere, they only measure at the power plant. And this, they don't really count that into the carbon footprint because it's mostly steam. At the power plant, basically, they just boil water, so they use the uranium to, to boil water that spins turbines to make electricity. The thing is, this is also radioactive. Um, and, and when they, when they say nuclear energy is clean, they don't talk about the radioactive part. Um, and they don't talk about all the waste. So all the waste at all the different stages. And then, of course, they transport the uranium all over the world, that uses fossil, fossil fuels, they don't count that. And then the, the most dangerous waste is after the power plant, this stuff is dangerous forever. And they have to put the, the waste, see the uranium, they put it in these, um, they call it fuel rods. They have to be in those containers forever and these containers, they only last maybe twenty, twenty years, so you know, they have to keep putting them in new containers, they, they don't count that in the carbon footprint. So, so for, for nuclear energy, they just say, oh, it's clean, but they really don't count everything. Anyways, so that's my presentation and the reason why I, I, I talk about nuclear energy is because right now, the price of uranium is over a hundred dollars a pound. So, around wherever there's uranium, if companies are out there, they might, they might try to start mining if the price keeps going up. Um, we don't want them to mine, we wanna stop them and this first mine, we, we, I think we can stop them, we just, we just need everybody's help. And so that's why we're, we're asking everybody to, to get involved, pass resolutions, watch the roads, talk to people, you know, stuff like that. So um, that's our presentation and, and I'll just stop there, I don't know if you have questions, but um, yeah, we'll stay here, we'll, we'll be on the meeting until uh, until you guys get through the agenda.
Okay, thank you so much for doing the presentation. Although while you were doing the presentation, we get a call. So, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order at twelve thirty-four. P M. Although, um, I was gonna ask tena bili to do the implication, but um, I'll go ahead and ask Shama, Jamie. Again, so much for the business, although on the agenda, here we go, we come to approval of the agenda. I need a motion. A, Jamie motions. Second, Mary Ellis. Luke Clark. Questions, comments, concerns?
On the agenda, um, the resolutions number five was moved to resolution three. And resolution three on your agenda will move to resolution number four. And wherever, and then um, resolution number four, which is the emergency funds, was actually moved to number five. It just kind of swapped here and there. And on the number twelve, there was an addition by the chapter administration. Chapter administration is requesting to amend resolution T B K two zero two two dash zero one zero dash zero zero four, which is approving and supporting the FY twenty-four gaining carryover budgets to be utilized to pay for the chapter's uh telecommunications expenses in the amount of one thousand three hundred and forty-two dollars and eighty-five cents as budgeted. Those were the following changes, along with the present, presenters.
Okay. So with those additions and changes, um, motion by Jamie, uh, second by Mary Ellison Clark. Although questions, comments, concerns? Okay, no questions, comments, or concerns, all those in favor, I'll call for the vote, no votes who are in favor, raise your hands. Oppose? Abstain. Okay, motion, approval of the agenda, uh, pairs with twenty-two in favor, zero opposed, three abstain. Approval of the last chapter meeting minutes, January eighth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, which was already posted on the website. Uh, motion? Do you want a synopsis, Mary? Play? Second? Jamie? Okay, questions, comments, concerns about the last meeting minutes? One one? One voice? Okay. There are no comments, questions, or um, co- uh, concerns about the approval or the approval of the last chapter meeting minutes? I'll go ahead and then call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Okay, um, oppose? And then abstain? Motion carries for approval of the last chapter meeting minutes with twenty-three approvals or opposed to um abstain. So when we come to the presentations here, is Shiyaj on the Herman on the Okay. If we have his um, report though? How about Alcee, is Alcee on?
Alcee's online.
Okay, Alcee. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and give you the floor if you wanna do um Herman and yours' report.
Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, yat eshke da shignaet, um, shee e, Elsie smalkenin, shee e, uh, tworich itni nishnaal, look adne basheshchiin, ado, kizhlanai dashichae, ado shehe dashinale. Shan thodha, you see na shon, the koi ki, oh, you should, ketaut, and at, api ken, do, na tsan, shan thoo. Uh, koi ke, hedini, the lech koi ki, um. Delegate Daniels, uh, report, but, but said that, ah, handi, a koh. Um, on nea da a, um, winter session, but not stay late, um, sella zande. Um, January twenty-second to the twenty-fourth, a da, uh, legislations that, um, passed, da liato. Um, reports from various departments, ito bahone. A koi tsapi ken, aid, and the koi ki, beso, o, arpa monies, two point four million, um, yep. It's a hold neto, binti, mashin, the koi ki, um, machine proposals, a dal ya. Aito, koi ki, um, ba shehille, oh, you beso, to, koi ki, she, um, kin thah, koi ki, um. You know, kidai, the, a koh, um. Ah, you see, she had, but the needle, lech a, former chapter manager, Earl Sombrero. Um, na tsis, na tsos, ah, you see, ya, ya, na shnishto, koi ki, ah, tsas, bakha eshwood, koi ki, deadline, hadot, ni da da. Um, a year and a half ago, September, eh, da, um, the last chapters, na tsan, oje to, shan to, that's api ken. Koi ki, na tsos, ya, da, honi, hatno, koi ki, um, delegate Daniels, well, every delegate, all twenty-four delegates, eight point eight million, which, ah, da, ya, koi ki, chapters, um, be khat, oh, lohiki, uh, na tsos, ya, that, 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 dochi, hatno, eh, um. Earl Sombrero, um, ya, na shnish, deadline, hatno, koi ki, proposals, um, for the various projects. I believe it was um electrification, um, haishi, don't ne, um, oh, you na tsos, she, that, that's, and then, a koh, the, um. A koi ki, non-administration, um, na tsos, ichna, dey, ye, a koh, uh, beso, ya, ni, de, oh, she, um. Chan nishto, you know, she, koi ki, um, projects, that, that, dochil. A koi, eh, da, um, na tsanit, and the na tsos, they, when the rat, the, um, tahan, this, and then, a koh, beso, do, chi, you know, she, um. Other chapters, oje to, shan to, that's api ken, haishin, projects, um, extra ones, she, um, proposals, eh, she, uh. Um, which, ah, the, ne, la, kong, that it has to be a complete packet. Call, time is of the essence, satne neki, um, deadline, koi ki, it's getting really close. We're in the last few months to try to get everything situated so that we're not reverting the money back to federal. A koh, um, eh, she, hot, ah, koi ki, um, na tsos, kichel, na, eh, ki, eh, um, eh, four, initially to the four chapters. A koh, a ship, na shnishi, ki, eh, um, na tsos. Meeting documents, uh, P card reconciliation, dechni ki, le, delegates, um, company credit card, dechni ki, uh, for travel and meals, eh, hot, ah, um, delegate Daniels, ba she, na shnishto, uh, expense reports, dechni ki. Um, eh, hot, ah, ba, every month, um, bahone, she, ito, a koh. Ah, ne, da, oje to, da, shan to, um. Corrective action plan, dechni ki, eh, da, uh, legislation. corrective action plan, uh, 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 um, that's where it ended up, and they were, um, I believe a deadline was also given again so that, um, they work on the various findings that were noted in their audit reports. Um, uh, 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 um, Chanto has been really on top of things and making sure that, you know, they, they're correcting a lot of the errors, I guess, from past administrations. Uh, 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 that there's, uh, 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 emergency assistance, uh, 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 that's what was passed recently, so, um, I know I saw that on the agenda for your meeting there. Con, yeah, um, you know, just make sure that you guys are taking care of each other and stay safe. She, uh, 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 you know, you guys know your own household, and if you're able to check on others. She, um, uh, 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 um, I know the request is always made for heavy equipment to, um, grade some of these roads, but a lot of times it has to go through the, um, emergency management department, if not, N dot. Eight, uh, she, uh, 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 okay, I just want to also thank the presenters, um, uh, 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 I appreciate you all being there and providing information. Um, I, uh, 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 uh,
Oh, yeah, Shabba, hold on, I'm gonna, uh, 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 I just want to express too that our counsel delegate, she, so, um, keep them in your prayers because he, he, um, he does a lot of work, a lot of traveling, um, although he goes, uh, kind of, he's, he's, uh, 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 he's not here in person, but he's, he's, but, you know, he's one delegate that represents four chapters too. So, uh, uh, um, hopefully served, um, first stretch, uh, 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 put a lot of miles on my car, though that's, you know, that's part of the, uh, for us, uh, 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 because, um, not formation is not a small area, it's all over the place, so. Um, again, uh, do you have any question for, um, Ms. Elsie? Okay, we'll move on, thank you, Shabba, um, Elsie, for, for continuing to be online with us. Yeah. Uh... Where is it? Grazie, I should have posted. Okay, so we're back in a little bit, okay, um... And they said plants on grazing areas. Oh, um, calling uranium, but yes, presentation, Hanya, did you guys have any questions for her? Okay? No, just, go over, please.
If they can shut it down, you know, if they're, maybe they can work on ultimate problems. Or you all, we cross, by, uh, instead of going through the reservation.
Okay.
You know, there's, yes, you know, yes. If they shut it down, you know, that'll be good.
Okay. Ms. Leona? Uh, there is a question on the floor for you, uh, did you hear?
No, no, I couldn't hear, can you repeat that?
Okay, uh, the question is, if you, if you're not able to shut down the mine, um, are you able to look at other routes around an out of nation for them to get their uranium? This is the question. Are there alternative plans?
Oh, okay, sorry, I was on mute. I think the chapter can, can ask the Forest Service directly, um, or, or even request from the company, Energy Fuels, uh, some of these questions. As far as we know, the only route is through the rez, um, looking at the map, I think if they were to go around, they, to the north, I think they would have to go through Las Vegas and, and up around, uh, Nevada and Utah, but, um, that's really long, and of course they won't do that because they won't make any money. But if, you know, if the Navajo Nation demands that, you know, maybe the, the company can't do it because it's gonna cost too much money. Um, so, so there, there's things people can request. Our group is not asking for, um, changing the route, we're, we're just focusing on stopping the mine. So we're gonna keep working on that, but I think the chapters can request, um, just for your own chapter, you can request different things from, from the Forest Service, you, you can also send your own letter to EPA, um, some Navajo EPA, or US EPA is not really involved, but, um, Navajo EPA, Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, um, and again, the Forest Service, and, and I, I can help write some of these letters, um, there's already some letters as a draft asking, you know, when is the transport gonna start? Um, how much uranium can they store on site? Because right now, that's, um, they're just keeping that uranium there till they get more. Um, I mentioned it's only low-grade, so they're trying to get high-grade uranium. We, we don't know when they will get that. Um, our group, we're, we're a small group, we work with several people, but your chapter is a government. Um, as a government, the chapter can request directly from the Forest Service to get notification about everything as soon as possible. We, we can't ask that because we're not a government. Um, so there's some things you guys can do that we can't do, and I think the Forest Service, the governor, A dot, A D E Q, um, you know, they're, they're supposed to respond to you if you guys write letters and request this information, um, directly, and we can help do that.
Okay. Any other questions? He, uh, 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 uh,
I don't know. I think it's a very difficult question. It's a lot of things that need to be done. And then, you can see some problems in the future. But I thought it would be good to do it. Okay. I thank you, Eona, for giving us that presentation. I'm sure when we get to the new business under resolution, we'll be looking at the resolution that's there. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Serena and I will be on. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. Although, I think I'm small and don't like fish bombs. I'm fish bombs. Okay. Another topic is me, but I don't know.
It means that, uh, yeah, thank you. Oh, James, not much of a reporter. Uh, what did I say? She's on the list and that. But, uh, okay, he, I think he's a CEO of a lot of this. Uh, there are two, uh, there are two, uh, some of them, even the people that we're doing. Landing season. Although, uh, they're kind of, oh, you, uh, cats and all. Oh, 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 politics, although, oh, yeah, that's, so, it's really young, you know, but, yeah, I don't know. Yeah. Although, uh, I remember that, uh, I mentioned about dogs, like, you know, livestock. Although, uh, what's all, that has neck. Other places, um, they were called, or made, I don't know. Uh, and notice that we're driving non-road. There's a lot of pitbull on the roof, on the roof, so, yeah, that's, well, you got to take. So, though, uh, rock walrus, oh, and they're shepherd, pretty, that's, maybe, better way, I think, you know, when that. Because the everything, I think, uh, that he called. So, if you, uh, um, you have the knee out there in the area, in the, uh, that was hard or not. Take your, take your gun with you, or your golden arrow. So, if, if they're attacking your livestock, you don't have all that right to kill and shoot them off. Be quiet. So, uh, rock walrus, pitbull, eh, uh, I want chat with him. I don't know, walk on that side. Oh, yeah. Well, anyway, now, uh, take your, uh, already off the table, uh, that's okay. Make sure, I told you the last time, go to wonder up, fish and wildlife. Go, get your permit, small game permit, you need a item, I mean, for sixteen dollars. Make sure you have that in position to shoot these dogs or you predators or out there. Run around and fill enough your sheep or your goats or your, uh, cattle and your, uh, cats. But, I think, yeah, come down, that's all, not, you go with it, or they're, um, go. Make sure that they come together, that small game license, they get their sixteen dollars. For one year, they, uh, uh, how, uh, uh, from the, that, yeah. Keep it in your legend. See, call me, be, be chatting, because if you, if your neighbor told you that, leave them or get your arrow or not, we're complicated, yeah, others. For, but then, you don't even take your weapon with you. So make sure that you have your, your small game license on you. What's up? I don't approve that, uh, we did chat, they did, they did also. By there, I need to pass on, so, if, if you, I'm not an option. Oh, I look, I'm loose. But none of these pitbull, German shepherd, rock walrus, they will attack little cats. How's up? Uh, if you send them that, yeah, they, you know, but, but lots of, but, not that. So, if you're not an option, all right, yeah, I think, yeah, the look, uh, for them. Although, uh, you try to use some hay, that, for that. Never left of that. Uh, I, 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 so, trying to get some, uh, uh, coal. I think that coal, we give, oh, yeah, that you need, so, um, um, um. Uh, that, the coal, and, uh, uh, so, I don't know, just, so, any of that. So, trying to get, uh, this, this coal from, uh, the vendors. Or, uh, that, that, in, that, in, home, it's true, with the car, I'm here, yeah. So, we changed that, uh, uh, coating, maybe, I mean, chat, I don't know, that's more, uh. Oh, cool, for eight. We give, yeah, the audio, of, of, they said, we let him go, that's come on, and all we'll do is, uh, for, yeah, uh. Now, pregnancy, now, he was close, and raining, and they don't ask, well, that is come. That's here, oh, you don't find that, yeah, oh, that is come. We don't see, uh, we, uh, although tomorrow, we not home out, uh, District Region meeting, oh, if you have it, so, yeah, not a problem. I don't hear, uh, some, some of the years that had, uh, per, uh, permanent transfer that was done. Then, that's here, two years ago, in Coet, uh, in, uh, yeah, uh. There were no minutes, uh, that were provided for them. All I can tell is, uh, you're checking, uh, District Region meeting, and now, I'm on, so, I hear. Eh, uh, we'll try to cover that for you, obviously, staying on, uh. So, if you, yeah, that, uh, we did secretary, he, uh, Brittany. Wouldn't do the minutes and all that for, for us to take the, uh, uh, transfer, not that, the other thing, that there's no, no minutes on that. So, we try to, we took her off, uh, being a secretary. Just, just for once, and then we took her off as secretary, Russell, he didn't secretary, that's me. I'm, uh, back on the chair, he, he, or, or, or vice president, so, we should be given off, uh, minutes. So we go along with your, your, your papers. When you do come to, uh, District Region meeting, bring your paper that, well, assigned, I, yeah, since you live. Uh, they are June, I've been, I've been, yeah, bring it over, and then we'll, I want to renew your minutes for you. Okay, with that, so that's the only way we could do it, so we're gonna forward all of those. Although, uh, via A, they, they want your confirmation plan. Your confirmation plan, you get IC, that's it, oh, yeah, that, I mean, yeah. If, if you haven't, uh, class on, I think there's three more classes that they need to do to cover all these confirmation plans. Eh, he, he, I don't know, I don't know, oh, okay, okay, with that. Although, um, uh, February twenty, eh, right, he, 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 not he, uh, Tom, uh. Um, how, which I do, yeah. Anyway, I, yeah, I, I, uh, don't think that, uh, those that have cattle, that, that, uh, uh, big, big quality, sure. Eh, uh, you're, eh, I didn't, uh, great girl, yeah, now, eh, I just, that, she, I don't know, uh, they don't, uh. Good meeting on that, that February twenty, uh, Tom, Tom, uh, I don't know, uh. They, it's, one of the, uh, uh, this year, I think, was from now. You're eight or ten to your fourth shot, you're, uh, 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 who, I'll be providing for you, if you come. And we, yeah, eh, so, if you, yeah, I'm not, although, our meeting, meeting, it's going to stop. So, if you, yeah, I, I don't, I'm, uh, uh, there's a lot of games that. Uh, I don't know, that policy. We, uh, but actually, we're going to bring those up. But if we do have, it'll be on Valentine. And Valentine dinner. So, if you, yeah, Valentine, uh, she, uh, if we do have, will you know by end of the, that, I mean. So, if you, yeah, uh, for that, I see, but, yeah, so, it can get colder, and, uh, and then hopefully, that it will get warmer and dry, you know. But, yeah, uh, I hope that's what, and, go, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. I kind of asked, okay, basic plants and grazing areas, eh, comments on, was supposed to come and kind of give you what you, what I wanted to do. But the basic for that is, um, invasive plants, invasive plants. Eh, a Russian olive, call it, uh, uh, any invasive plant, I mean, that takes a lot of water. Although, um, what he wants to do is to get together with V I A, so, um, every year, we, for, I've been, although. There's money that can come from other places along with the grazing official. They can come together to, to attack these canyon, we, yeah, I think, um, all the, uh, invasive plants, so, and they're. They're not native to the, to here, of course, and like I said, um, hope, they take a lot of water. Of course, um, if they get rid of those in these canyons, and then plant, plant trees that can hold together the, uh, the soil. Of course, eh, though, oh, was, that's the, they, um, want that, the, oh, eh, no, but we have heavy rain, but, uh, it goes. Way down into these canyons, although, oh, was, that's, oh, some evotions. Eh, but, uh, we are, and they, we, um, all the way out to the canyon to make power, you know, that. But if, uh, what Thomas wanted to do is to, to let the people know. We are canyon today, and it needs, like, uh, the, um, the better, uh, thing. Eh, um, to help them get, get rid of these, um, weeds, the weeds, the obnoxious, they, next time. Of course, eh, uh, a, 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 with, uh, that, good plants, good, um, uh, uh, big, uh, she's a big one, so, we can't, um, yeah, or, yeah, I think, no. So that's why he wanted to let you know on that. And then, when you have, uh, um, resolution to that, eh, um, it's in your agenda. And I think it was number. Number ten? Resolution ten, right?
Yeah.
Eh, it's, um, resolution ten. Okay? And then next, we'll give it to, for the next two, I'll give it to, um, the chapter secretary. Treasure. Oh, okay. Um, what else can I add and do then is, um, chapter secretary is, um, see if you over here. So, uh, Long House Valley. Uh, there's a resolution for that one too. And that is. Number eleven. Long House Valley substation. Eh, um, there's a presentation, uh, um. Shut there, I forgot her name. Arlene, eh, yeah, Arlene, are you ready to do, uh, uh, presentation?
Uh, good afternoon, can you hear me?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
Ako di chingo eh ya di ni trahnaast iki eh shan thohoki aro in da naasas an aro in da Tafikin aro ndle tonalia bedi ne aro an le goya it i le koomai mesa goya eh di atenklishe nti iki eh le long long house valley bedi nne iki eh aro tey substation niki eh eh aro bedaast iko eh di chingo be atenklishe iki ni trahast i ako di dahor dahor wando nan shadan lchadigi aro in da di ahtro be dahlke iki eh bedaast i eh eh ya bi gasali ni hito ni it's a capacity because of the development at um the ten acre site at junction highway one sixty and ninety eight ako eh hitati ti niki uh junction highway ninety eight do one sixty hitati ti niki kwa eh na liha baho wana lchadigi eh eh kwa egi NTU A de um IC bi gasali ni hito ni ko benada da doh ihi iki eh ya shan eh di um Christmas tree bedi ni lheya le ni higa go ndaast i um ndeitisi um kesmishko di um byjdiillt ilgo aro le eh pasin lso go ahtro seko i aw eh ya allaha lihend iti um Christmas lightsigi ahtro seko nde a eh di ben daast iko a antragonneso toh da da la benjillt iho eh kwishy beda di itla ako eh onas do nta ntsos da ba i ba um they start tripping ako ochot enahalon ni trahast ika di chingo di kwa enhi lhasa anigi di shan thohoki aro tafikin aro kai bi tho aro tonalia le tu bisiri koomai mesa goya di etego eh atenklishe eh ni trahast i ako aisi abiga go eh ya ni hito hortl enahalango eh beni na eh kwa eh eh ba ndeit di shan thohodo um la jetna zinigi uh eh bell ba ndeit aro an hi koto uh na liha um uh nan shan lchadigi aju ben deilnashigi ako di um le bedaikin jo go ti niki a da saanigi substation niki eh kadaa ben ne beni na niki eh di um aro bedaast iki eh eh ya le wachago zatle jin bha jin washita inis nte shan peabody coal bedi ni nde eh aro le dragline bedi nne iki na ki aro tadaa shne eh ajo go eh ya um beniye el ya nde eh beniye eh aro um eh aro power bedi ti iki eh aju draglines bedi nne iki eh eh yollholl nde jo ka re do ta inis da eh ta inishe eh nes tses ka re ya di kliya jo da saanigi eh a ben ne sli ako oh eh kwa eh eh ya NTU eh eh ya um nache khae na kinah khae nda da shnu ohu da zan ad yollkall ita bellhi lchad da dene beno nde eh eh ya allaha odaw eh ba ndahu ita nde di tey jo saanigi eh eh ya iyi si aro ni trahast iki ni hito ni nde aisi babel bedeni ke digi eh dey dey kliya jo da saanigi uh long house valley substation bedi ne le nabho national monument go ti niki a da saanigi eh eh di iki uh ni bedaado yallto ni trahast iko eh be go don da ntsos da dole hallat ohayu eh ya um eh di jo aju atenklishe yun da lshigi yow yallbe da hasen a a abiga bedlah go uh electricity ito lill go biga hall la di dragline eh xin iyon lcho na ki na ki tada tada kha nde jo eh dey yehli ne ako ka re eh a ben ne ako eh kwa egi ayi si eh ya um be ni hika be 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 nhalan do lella di no eh ya ba ndeit ako sikero shid ne no lenigi kodoo eh ya aditsa tafikigi dan higa ni gi jo di do nhlided i halu it ego lcha di djahto di nabho nation go de anatsos beda di ne shan thohodo eh a da supporting resolution bedi nne iki eh ya nhaadeila ka re eh ya kwa enaltsosilhiex eh shiya di deller eh naha khae di la ko aisi ba hehnsen kodoo eh ya hot ego eh dan hisen oltan a ako bellta nahashthani gi la aro ni trato da sida shud shud deyrim maybel aro in da kwa eh eh ya Vern as ti Vern olhi ego eh jo bedi peabody ya nar nshne eh eh xin ambilagana kesego ye yen lchodol ne eh xin ba dinsahto le uh sheteh uh kodoo nhaadanaa asonde
Uh konaashthani ako uh
Uh Arlene
Yes, I'm asking them if you can do an English presentation.
Oh, okay.
Hold on, hold on. So is that okay?
Um and we can live in five minutes.
In five minutes, Vern. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Uh can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh good afternoon, everyone. My name is Vern Han Giva and I'm one of the board members on the Shanto Economic Development Corporation, SEDC. Anyway, for several years, uh SEDC has had concern over the power that currently feeds not only uh Shanto but also the other six chapters that get fed power from the uh the Segi Substation. Uh once the hotel comes online here this uh summer or spring or summer, uh all the power will be utilized off of that small uh Segi Substation. And so there there is a larger substation, a a substation at Long House Valley. We call it Long House Valley Substation or L H V, which was specifically built to power the two Peabody Coal Mines, but since the Peabody Mine shut down in end of twenty nineteen, that Long House Valley Substation is basically sitting there idling and that substation has two large transformers inside of it that is large enough to power the whole Western Navajo Nation. So we're coming before the chapters, asking the chapters to pass resolutions to um have NTU A and the Navajo Nation agree to have power from that Long House Substation for the Western Chapters. I think Arlene mentioned already that six chapters currently are being fed from the um Segi Substation and that thing will be up to capacity again when the hotel comes online here in the springtime. So you can't add any more load to it. So that's why it's so critical that the chapters pass the resolutions requesting of uh NTU A to get power from there. Currently, NTU A is proposing to build a line from where the old uh um Segi Substation is up to Shanto, somewhere north of Shanto, and install a transformer up there. And they're gonna build a one fifteen KV uh line up up from uh Segi Substation to Shanto and they're talking about putting in a, I know this is technical, but they're talking about putting in a two twelve MVA uh transformer there. But in the uh Long House Valley Substations, there's two fifteen MVA rated uh transformers, two thirty to sixty nine current uh KV. Currently, the uh uh the Segi Substation is only feeding the Western uh six Western Chapters with uh twenty four nine. So it's a lower voltage line and so we need the uh a sixty nine slash one fifteen KV line, just like the rest of the Navajo Nation has. So that's kind of what we're asking about. I hope I hope this explains why we're making this presentation. Thank you.
Hey Vern, for that presentation, Arlene, that's all. Uh the resolution number eleven is shining. Okay, um the next two again is just a small one. Wanna get it?
Alright, so um the presentation regarding the virtual policy um chapter meeting. Let's move here a little bit. The number nine here, uh that one is to for the chapters to approve or no to support the virtual attendance for chapter meetings. And so um that one's separate from the virtual policy. Once the chapter approves, at least fifty six chapters have to approve supporting or opposing the um virtual attendance of uh virtual attendance. And this one is just to support the Title Twenty Six amendments, which just includes people to attend virtually at these chapter meetings. And so what we're doing as a chapter is to hopefully support that um legislation and those amendments to Title Twenty Six. Now, with this presentation here is to talk about how we are gonna conduct those virtual attendance and how we're gonna take role and how we're gonna maintain form. And so what I have done was place those policies in the on the website. So I don't know if you guys had the liberty to look on the website, but um it's just to go over how we're gonna conduct again the meetings. Just scroll all the way down to the bottom will have the emergency uh virtual chapter and uh the virtual hybrid plan. Overall, it just what what happens is what we're gonna do is we're gonna gain your login information. So when you guys enter the people who are on the virtual meetings, they'll we'll get them to give us their name, maybe their phone number, whatever, and we'll have a separate sign in sheet where we log in their time when they come into the meeting. We'll verify that they are registered through the tafikin. And then that's how we'll maintain the policy, the sign in and sign out with the locations of the chapter officials. The chapter officials within this policy, we are saying that the chapter officials have to be present unless a emergency or medical issue is given. Then the chapter manager or the chapter president has to approve the the okay for them to attend virtually. But with right now, the chapter uh administration or the chapter officials have to be attended in person in order to claim the stipend. Okay. Then again, with the quorum, what we're asking is at least eighteen people have to be present in the chapter. That seventy five percent of the twenty five uh membership quorum, so it's at least, I'm sorry, at least eighteen uh people have to be present and seven can be online to be counted as quorum. But if more do join online, then that's fine. But as long as we maintain eighteen in here and seven online, then that means we have quorum for the rest of the meeting. And again, here, it just goes over technical malfunctions. So people who are logging in online are responsible to stay muted and only are being called upon upon the chairs um you know, opening the floor to them. But other than that, the secretary treasurer, myself, will have the ability to disconnect people if they are causing a disturbance or anything like that in the online meetings. But I also have the ability to mute them if they are causing disruptions. Again, that's all based off of the chairs um the chair's recommendation. Again, it just talks about forced disruptions, interrupting another another member, and then how voting will be taken. What voting will happen is we will take the in-person voting first and then we will go online. Online, we can name them one by one as to who's online, like how we did during the COVID time when we did our chapter meetings. We will do uh calling out individual how they vote. There's also the ability in the chat to where they can report their vote as well and that will be counted a part of the voting process. Or they can do the uh emojis in the chat. So as you guys can see on online here, uh for those that are here, uh they have the ability to go into the chat portion and then they can write in here what they feel like they wanna vote on this particular resolution. Also, there's a portion in here where they can do sort of like uh the emojis saying like thumbs up, thumbs down, or or reaction saying that they agree. And then any person who wants to either motion online or are also in favor, there's this raise hand option. So when they want to talk, they can hit the raise hand uh option. Other than that, that's pretty much the entire policy. That's just what it goes over. And then any individual who decides to speak on online or is providing a presentation will be required to show their video so that everyone has the ability to view who's talking and who presented, if they're able to. Questions on the policy? Again, this is available online for everyone to view. This is be counted as the first reading. Now, at the next chapter meeting, um if I don't get any recommendations, modifications to this, then we can put it on the next chapter meeting as to adopt this policy for the chapter membership. So this one right now would be consistent, which would be your first reading, I guess you could say. But again, you can go online and get that. Or request a copy and I can I can send that to you or the chapter can send it to you. Okay, now that's the first one, the virtual policy. Now we'll move on to the emergency plan. So the Tafikin have presented, have uh the chapter manager provided a proposal on the emergency plan, basically going over how we're gonna conduct our our emergency operations and the plans. Um again, pretty much in every emergency situation, we're gonna set up a command center here. The team is gonna consist of the virtual or the chapter officials. Uh again, chapter president will be the incident commander, vice president will be the safety officer, traffic controller, secretary would be the finance and administration, along with the grazing official will be in charge of livestock, chapter manager will be the senior advisor, the CLUPC committee will be providing information and being the public information officer, the inscription house health center will be uh be the medical, and then any other volunteers would assist with labor and any other assistance needed from the chapter uh from the incident command team. Then here are the command centers as where the Tafikin chapter would be the command center, inscription house is identified as the medical center, inscription house, chapter and senior center will be identified as the shelter center, the Tafikin senior center has been identified as the food and safety, food and shelter center, and the storage center as well. And then the upcoming chapter warehouse would be the storage, roll store, PPE, and everything else. Again, majority of this pretty much consists of how the operations command will be from where we're going, how we'll how identify hazards, create its risk assessments, and what our capabilities are, just gather the resources, and then also be the liaison between the chapter official, the chapter and the Navajo Nation government, along with the other supporting entities. Again, this will not um start until the declaration of emergency has been established by the emergency uh management department and the concurrent of the uh Navajo Nation president. So this pretty much lays out um the priority levels and how we're gonna identify who is a priority, what is a priority, then the declaration, uh this is just the standard uh declaration of emergency disaster plan, and basically talking about how uh we're gonna go out to these individuals' homes and see which ones are at a higher risk. Again, this is on the chapter website. You can go ahead and review it and and um provide feedback, recommendations. If none, we can go ahead and move to the next chapter meeting to fully adopt this resolution uh this plan. But I wanted to inform you guys that this is Tafikin's own plan, the chapter plan. We also, the Nats Regional Council passed an irregional emergency plan. And so I guess the question came up to where is whether we want to adopt the regional plan as our emergency plan? Again, it's almost the same. So you have the ability to review that. And I would have printed it out, but it's thirty six pages on one and the eighteen on the other, so I didn't think we'd need to print it out. So to be cognizant of the environment, I posted all online. Questions?
Any questions? If you want a copy, a paper copy for it, um you can have it printed on that site. You can ask for a copy, or you can give them your email address and have it sent to you if you have that. Or no, you can um look at it and review it. Okay, on to the next main business. Okay. Okay, there are no other questions. Uh we'll go ahead and make resolutions, which are talking here. Why? Remember, anything that has to do with money, we have to do individually. Okay, new business, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero one eh beha no.
Accepting and approving the January two thousand twenty four budget report sponsored by the chapter administration. Again, everybody has the ability to log in online to review the report uh the budget. You go through the wind system, it'll be there. Currently, what has been reconciled from January is the general fund. The general fund, currently, we are at eight thousand four hundred and sixty one dollars and fifty cents. Personnel travel, which is at one hundred and thirty seven thousand of one hundred eighty four uh dollars and fifty nine cents. The trust funds is fourteen thousand nine hundred and three dollars and eighty two cents. The summer youth employment is two thousand four hundred ninety five dollars and eighty eight cents. The housing especially is at sixteen thousand eight hundred and fifty seven dollars and twenty seven cents. LGA is currently at twenty four thousand four hundred ninety, sorry, twenty four thousand four hundred and nine dollars and sixty nine cents. Chapter official staff and we are currently at twenty eight thousand five hundred and seventeen dollars and fifty cents. Scholarship general fund, we are fourteen thousand two hundred forty four dollars and real cents. Scholarship plan fund is at four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars. Public employment BEP, twenty nine thousand seven hundred thirty six dollars and fifty one cents. Veterans is at eight thousand nine hundred eighty eight dollars and seventy eight cents. Emergency fund, we are currently at twenty three thousand three hundred thirty one dollars and thirty seven cents. Chapter maintenance operation twenty one, which is uh ten thousand one hundred twelve twenty dollars and twenty three cents. The nomination sales tax, we're at three thousand five hundred ninety nine dollars and seventy two cents. Agricultural school fund, which is at thirteen thousand four hundred seventy eight dollars and forty seven cents. Unhealthy food tax, we're at one hundred and two dollars and nine cents. Bringing a total of three hundred sixty one thousand three hundred and forty eight dollars and fifty four cents.
Okay, motion? Very. Okay. Questions, comments, concerns? Hopefully next month is gonna save two point four million and some odd dollars because of the ARCO fund that comes that's coming. We're telling them hurry up and drop that money so we can get to work. Eh, chapter manager can get in contact with you and see if they can spare some people to come out here to do the reading. Okay, if there's no other questions, comments, or concerns, all those in favor, raise your hands. Oppose? Abstain. TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero one passes, we're twenty four in pay uh approval, zero opposed, six abstain. Number two.
TBK two zero two four dash zero two four three dash zero zero two, accepting and approving the monthly tax receipt deposits for January twenty four, uh January two thousand twenty four in the amount of five hundred twenty six dollars and twenty five cents budget.
Okay, um on your agenda, it says fifty dollars and eighty seven cents, right? And changes to And changes to five hundred?
Five twenty-six, twenty-five.
Five twenty-six, twenty-five, so when this agenda was printed earlier last week to now, we gained some money from last year. Um, they, they total reconciled and everything, and that's what they, that's what it is, like there, to the end of the month of January. Okay, motion? Laverne? Lake? Second? So now, the first name they send to my, um...
Henry.
Henry. Got it. I should remember that can't, can't be, oh, Henry. Okay, motion made by Laverne Lake, second by Henry Synergy. Questions, comments, concerns?
I just have a question, uh, why we don't show any percentage of the sub-total? In other words, you know, if you do personnel and travel, and it's fifty percent, you know, a lot of us would look at it and, wow, if our budget's fifty percent, it's all in that personal and travel, you know? Like, it's just numbered, nobody, no, no, whatever.
Okay, personnel and travel?
Yeah, I'm just asking, why can't we show percentage of the sub-total?
Uh, we just presented the way NOS nomination wants us to present it. They do. This is how they want it. We, we would like to have an actual broken down, but they don't want it that way.
Well, if you're just gonna put a sub-total or amount of sub-total, maybe it's just gonna show you fifty percent. You know, you don't have to audit it, you just will have to say, well, we spent it here, it just shows fifty percent. That's just an example of saying that we want it to stand in that way.
Okay, there is this one system that we have, that's on the, um, website. In there, you can go look at all the budgets where it's spent and everything in there as a guest. And it'll show you, um, what the budgets are, what line items are for. This is just a general, the one we have, that we give to the chapter. But the one in the WINS system tells you where the money is all budgeted for and everything.
So, I forget, you don't understand what I'm asking, you guys just say, percentage, that's off. Just put it in, on one side, column, it says, okay, blah, 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 it's a percentage of three hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yeah, I know, but it's, it's, but that's not the way they want it. They just ask us to, to, um, record what is, um, the budgets, the end, the ending budget at the end of the month, what the budgets are at that time. Any other questions? And there are no other questions, all call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, oppose? Abstain? Okay, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero two, passes with twenty-one approval, zero oppose, nine abstain. Number three?
TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero three, accepting and supporting the chapter's student financial assistance to full-time students, applicants who are enrolled twelve credit hours or more for the spring two thousand twenty-four semester in the amount of six hundred dollars. We currently have one applicant.
Remember, when we were approving the agenda, Larry told us that they switched around? So, number five, five is on the number five, is number three. Motion? Jamie? Notice the second? Priscilla Sosie? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Oppose? Abstain? TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero three, passes with twenty-two. Approval, zero oppose, eight abstain. Number four?
TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero four, approving and supporting the budget transfer of one thousand four hundred and forty-four dollars and seventy-five cents from seventeen dash six three to a two-one gasoline vehicle, and six thousand six hundred and seventy-five dollars and sixty-two cents from seventeen dash six three five two purchases of fruit, chapter, and five thousand from seventeen dash six three five three purchases of wood, and twenty-five hundred from seventeen six four one three, and after gas, propane, to funding seventeen six eight zero two equipment of fifty thousand six hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents to cover the shortfall PPE that were not anticipated.
Okay, this is forward, number three, that's number four. Motion? Do I have a motion? Jamie? Second? Henry? Synergy? Okay, questions, comments, and concerns? It's pretty much straightforward. Okay, call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Oppose? Abstain? TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero four, passes with twenty. Approval, zero oppose, ten abstain. Number five?
TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero five, approving and adopting the F one twenty-four, uh, chapter emergency fund allocation in the amount of thirty-five thousand, has questions?
Okay, on your agenda, it's number four, that's number five now. Motion? Henry? Second? Jamie? Questions, comments, concerns? Okay, call for the vote, all those in favor, please raise your hands. Raise them up high so we can see. Oppose? Abstain? Okay, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero five, uh, passes with eighteen approval, zero oppose, twelve abstain. The reason why I keep that number is to show that we still have form. That's the reason why I add every, everything. Those who doesn't vote for approval or oppose, I put it to abstain, so that we can show that we still have form. All right? Number six?
Number six, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero six, approving and supporting the submission packet of the Chonto Preparatory School Application Packet for Reauthorization by the Nominational Board of Executive Council.
Motion? Jamie? Okay, wait, you can motion, make your motion, whether it be for what you're gonna say. Or you can do that to the next one. Second? Laverne? Okay, questions, comments, concerns? All those in favor, please raise your hands. Raise them up high, this is for the reauthorization, so, for Chonto Preparatory School. Okay, we oppose. Those opposing? Abstain? Okay, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero six, approving and supporting the sub, oh, why am I reading this, sorry? Raise that. TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero six, passes with twenty-three approval, zero oppose, seven abstain. Number seven? Go ahead, Stan. Oh, you can look, yes. Okay, number seven? Yes, Jamie? Seven to eleven. Wow, we gave has money looking for paying you to. So, seven through eleven. Um, the motion is made to put, uh, resolution, to combine resolution number seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven. Made by Jamie, notice the, their second? Priscilla Sosie? I will have the secretary, treasurer read all, uh, from seven to eleven into the record.
What's seven, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero seven, approving and supporting the economic development to Chitipito Pump Store Hydro Project. Number eight is TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero zero eight, opposition to the energy field byline plant uranium mine and transportation or uranium nomination and connect communities and request the nomination president, nomination council, and the governor of Arizona to shut down the byline plant uranium mine and to prohibit transportation of uranium. Number nine, TBK two zero two four zero four three zero zero nine, approving and supporting the Nominational Council Resolution, CO dash eighty-five dash two-three, to amend the Nominational Local Government Act Title Twenty-Six to allow virtual hybrid chapter meetings. Number ten, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash one, zero one zero, requesting the Bureau of Indian Affairs and Land Management to provide funding and resources to study the invasive plant species, mushrooms, et cetera, and weed control in the District Two region affecting the livestock grazing areas. Number eleven, TBK two zero two four dash zero four three dash zero one one, requesting and supporting the Nominational and the Nalmo Tribal Utility Authority to take all necessary and appropriate action to use electricity for Longhouse Valley Substation to provide power to homes, businesses, governments, or facilities within the Tafikin chapter, the NOS region, and the chapters of the Western Agency on Nalmo Nation, Nalmo Resolution, which, which needs such power for domestic living purposes and economic development.
Okay, so motion was made, questions, comments, concerns, and any other resolutions? Oh, okay. Uh, this one here, the, um, Chitipito Pump Store Hydro Power Project. Eh, Chitipito, you know where Chitipito is? Eh, Chitipito has a, yeah. What they want, what they're proposing to do is to build a hydro power plant there. And the power plant, um, as he's gonna show you here, in a, in a minute here. Um, they have what they have, a hundred acres, they're requesting a hundred acres. Eh, yeah, another hundred acres, and what those are for is for the water. Water, water. Water, water. Aco, they have a generator. Power generate each company. Aco, electricity, each eagle store, each eagle. Aco, the hydropower plant. Aco, what they're wanting to do is to do that project. Aco, it's enough power that is equivalent to one of the towers that used to be at NGS. 750 megawatt. Aco, produce each eagle. Aco, if this is developed and done, it's for economic development, it'll help agriculture, it'll help all those things. Water, roads, drop bin, grazing, jobs, agriculture, economic development, and biodiversity. And the town, in the community of Chitipito, they don't have any economics. They don't have stores. They only have school and a clinic there. Aya, you said that supplies for job opportunities. Other than that, there's nothing. So, this is a project that they're looking to start, and that's how it's gonna look. Chitipito, so it's gonna be a hundred acres on the top, and then a hundred acres on the bottom. And then people are asking, but the thing that they're looking at is they're not looking at our clean water aquifers to use this. What they're looking at is the sea aquifer. The salty water. Aye, that's what they're looking at, to pump. Aco, they have a solar panel. Aco, aya, evaporation. Evaporate. Aco, they have a ship. Acho, they have a bed. They have salt, it's not. So that's what it's gonna produce too, and other salt minerals that can be used. That's what, it'll help, it'll help with that economically too, because they can sell that. So, aye, aye, that's what it's talking about. And here, from this chapter, what we wanna do is to say, oh, it's shiny, see how far it'll get. Because as you know, we don't have the generator anymore, generating station anymore to power, to power, the power that it had. That generating station alone had powered the whole western region of the United States. That's what we were told. So, this is another economic development that can be used to Chitipito community as well as the Nalumisian. And I'd just like to add, it's always western that's coming up with economic developments.
And then, one thing I wanted to mention is that this one here is sort of another type of renewable energy that is being used. What happens is we're pumping the water to the upper reservoir, and then during the time when it's the peak demand of electricity being sold, that is when the upper reservoir, we drain is the lower reservoir. So we're making electricity and then also making more money for the Nalumisian. And then with this portion, like we were stating, one coal plant that was at NGS, 750 megawatts, was also the same over at Four Corners Power Plant. That whole system right here can generate that one power, that can generate one power plant. What was recommended was, one megawatt can actually produce enough energy to support 1300 homes. So, just know that 750 megawatts can power a lot of homes. And with this initiative, you see, from what was presented to us was, the Nalumisian and the chapter would be the only one to operate this. This would have, this would help us with the electric deficiencies that we have on the Western Agency side. So, that's where we're at.
Okay? Yeah, 700, provide 700 jobs to do this.
To create this and 100 permanent jobs.
It'll create 700 jobs to do this project, and then after this project is done, it'll have 100 jobs to operate this. Okay, any other?
If we're gonna use the same power to pump the water back up to the top.
The solar panels are what is used to offset the electric that is being used to pump that water into the upper reservoir.
Yeah, that's why the solar panels will be on top of the lakes or the water. Okay? Yeah? Alright. We'll call for the vote. Chama is very worried about our corn.
I am. I'm hungry.
Okay. I have no others. Okay, Sarah online has a question. Go ahead.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, hi, I'm, we were also presenting with Leona on Hall No. And my name is Serena Riggs. I'm a registered voter at Tibi City. Actually from Big Mountain area. So, I had a question on this, on this pump storage. And I've also, in the past, worked on a pump storage that was proposed, that has been proposed on the LCR, Little Colorado River, in the Cameron area and Botaway area. And that, that pump storage was promising the same things for the community, but the electricity that would be generated would not be going back to the community and elsewhere. And I was just wondering, who the people are that are proposing this? I know it says Chitipito under, but who would be the company that would be doing this? And one of, from my experience of working on pump hydro storage, is that it takes a lot of water, and that it takes more water to, to create this, generate this electricity. And in the proposed storage there in the LCR, the aquifer that they would be using is, is, is really ancient. And so, how much usage that they're proposing would completely deplete that aquifer. And so, we have to look at the sea aquifer that we're currently using surrounding Black Mesa, because the recharge, I'm not speaking on, as an individual, I'm not speaking for Hall No, I'm speaking for myself, as an individual who has worked on projects before, just to clarify. And I, I think that, looking at the impacts of Peabody and how much they use to slurry the coal, we have to think about how much water is there right now in the aquifer that we're, we're using. And from, from my knowledge, looking at the land and, and being out at my, at my own homestead, we've seen springs that have been depleted, we've seen the ground has been caving in. And so, we know that the aquifer is not sustaining as it used to be. And I'm just wondering if we can, if there's probably more information in regards to this, because it's a, it is, it is something to consider. And we, I know that we are impacted without the Nalumisian generating station. And I know that we need to look at alternate forms of creating power for our homes that don't have electricity. And also looking at how to bring water into homes. And yeah, I just wondered who might be the, the company that is proposing this and, and helping out this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. What I would like to do is that I'll refer you to the website they have, which is Nature People First. It's called Nature and People First. They have all the information right there. And then this is when the Chitipito Chapter. So, the Chitipito Chapter President, which is Paul Manson, and then he's working with another individual there that, I think he was a council delegate, come there? Report, former council delegate? Anyways, those are the ones that you'll have to ask for questions to, and then look on the website.
Okay, yeah, I am looking at the website, and I see it is, it is a company that also does business in other countries, in France and Europe. So, yeah, it's the first I've heard of it, and I'm just, I was just curious. And just to be cautious in ensuring that we, we, we have the, the best interest of, of the people in our communities to, to help us develop ways of harnessing power and distributing power, and not capitalizing off of us as, as a Nalumisian, as a sovereign tribe.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, well, we'll call for the vote on the floor. So, I'm gonna go ahead and close comments, concerns, and questions, and go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. All those oppose? Abstain? Okay. passes with 20 approval, zero opposed, abstain. Okay, number 12.
Number 12. Again, TBK 2024-043-12, amending resolution, TBK 2022-010-004, approving and supporting the FY24 gaming theory or budget to be utilized to pay for the chapter's telecommunication expenses in an amount of $1,342.85. That's budget.
Okay, motion? Mary? Elsie, Claire, second? I just know you, Ashma. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Questions, comments, concerns? Aya, well, go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Oppose? Abstain? TBK 2024-043-012, passes with 22 approval, zero opposed, eight abstain. Okay, that'll conclude our resolutions. And those that are online, that have resolutions here, would you like to say something?
Oh, no, just thank you very much.
Okay. Like I said, that concludes our resolutions. Okay. Thank you. Thank you so much for staying with us through the end. And I'd like to thank Chantel Preparatory School Representatives and the school board members, just standing with us through the end. Yes, Jamie? You don't wanna hear me talk anymore? I was gonna give you a great report. Okay, like I said, thank you. And then for the presenters that were online, my report is that, number one thing is, we did get approved for our Aqua Fund. We're waiting for the money to, the president and every, all the necessary signatures are on it. So, we're just waiting for the money to come into the bank. We do have the advertisement for the six positions, six, five laborers, or six laborers and one supervisor for the project. A for the bathroom additions and for any renovations or anything like that, that people have already applied for. So, all that is ready to go. The applicants are putting in their applications. So, Aye she tried production, closed the net. And then from there, we're gonna go into interviews and everything, so that everybody is ready to go when that money comes in. So, because we kept bugging them, Elsie, Herman, our council delegate, Herman, Daniels, and us here, the chapter manager, we all kept bugging them, telling them, hurry up, we get this done, hurry up, we get this done, or we have to give the money back. So, it's a great help, Elsie and Herman pushing this up at the window. window rock level for us. Ottawa, the Saint Mary's Conference, uh, not Saint Mary's Conference, but whose bank? Don't forget that, um, people that, uh, we do have a good turnout that come out, they can, that come out to do these things with us, eh, but I can't find anyone. So, other than that, that's all I have, is a report. Ottawa, um, if anything and everything, if we forget or we wanna announce something, always look to the chapter website, give the chapter board a chance outside, and then to the Facebook, chapter Facebook page, that's where we put all our announcements. So if you have Facebook, if you're a Facebook member, always go to the chapter, um, Facebook page to find, um, announcements that are made. Okay? I will go ahead and recognize my mom's adjournment, call for adjournment. Motion to adjourn, Jamie, Notice B. Second. Laverne. Wait. Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous. Raise your hands. Opposed? Abstained. Okay, adjournment. Uh, is approved with 23 favor or approval, zero opposed. Seven abstained, be adjourned at 2:29. Thank you very much, I appreciate your presence here at this chapter.
Thank you for all those that are online, have a wonderful day.
Elsie, you're missing out on a chicken.